Okay, this September 30th, 2020 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'd like to have a motion to approve that. There will be, we anticipate, given time, a non-meeting at the end of this, but we don't need to put that on the agenda, so.
So can we do that time we get to the non-meeting and then do we do the reading of the, I know that's a...
I think we just adjourn and go into non-meeting.
Okay.
I can't remember how to do any of this.
Yeah, we've only been on the board nine years, we still don't have it right. So could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved.
Second?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Six in favor, the agenda's approved. Just a couple words before we begin the interviews with Deb. We have about 30 minutes for each candidate. And on the list of questions, we have seven questions, which I think means that when you ask a question, if there's a follow-up you'd like to ask, you know, it's quite possible we have time for that. And it doesn't have to go rigidly, just these seven questions. So if somebody, for example, says, you know, "I worked on the PTO for five years," you might just say, "Could you say something about, you know, expand that?" If the person doesn't do that on her own. Michael's going to kind of make sure we kind of keep roughly to time, so that we have about 30, 35 minutes for each candidate. At the end of the interviews, we're going to have a chance to talk, and we're going to have a chance to vote. We don't necessarily have to make a decision, we could possibly move it to the seventh. The seventh is going to be a very busy meeting, so I think if possible, we can make a decision now. Also, that would mean that the person who's chosen could be sworn in and could be part of the meeting on the seventh. Just one other thing, that if we, for some reason, can't decide by law, what happens is it goes to a convention of the town councils to make a decision.
No way.
So in other words, we've got to make a decision tonight.
In other words, we have to make a decision. I don't think the town councils would welcome this added burden.
Good luck, and that's a schedule.
We have to make a call, I think. Are there questions about, so we have the sequence right here with the questions. So are we ready to go to invite Deb in?
Ready.
Ready? Okay.
See if she's out there.
She's at the entrance like Rocky.
Deb, thanks for putting your hat in the ring and being part of this. We know this is probably not the most comfortable situation to be in. I think none of us in our own campaigns ever had to do this, so we'll try to make it as pleasant as it can be, and so happy that you're here and willing to be a candidate for this position. So I'll start, so what's going to happen is there are going to be about seven questions. Each of us will ask either one or two questions, maybe then with follow-ups. So feel free to, you know, as you say, your answer to expand on it, we're interested in, you know, what you'll bring to the board, your ideas about things facing the board, and so feel free to freely just talk about what you think on those issues. But I thought we'd start with kind of a basic question. You know, why did you choose to put your hat in the ring? Why did you choose to be an applicant for this opening?
Well, I mean, you all, I don't want to, I'm trying to try and not repeat myself because you all saw my letter of interest and my resume. But I've had kids in the school district for 20 years, and I'm going to hold this out a little bit. And I started volunteering when they were probably around first grade, and my first, the first thing I volunteered was the Oyster River Otter Swim Team, which, full disclosure, that was mandatory that you volunteer, but I still did it for five or six years with my kids, and I went above and beyond, and I always did, if they needed something extra done, another job, or, you know, anything, I was always willing to do it. And that was, it was a good experience. That was, my daughter would have been about five, and then my son is three, is behind her, and he, and my older one is eight years older than them. And then he started swimming, so I did that for a while, and then the next year, she was in first grade, and I got asked to become a Girl Scout leader. So I said, "Okay, I'll do that." Always it's, "Do this, it'll be fun." So I said, "Okay, I'll do that." And I enjoyed that, too. I was a Girl Scout when I was a kid. So I did that, she was from first to seventh grade, and then I was, my son then joined Cub Scouts, and they asked, I was a volunteer with the PAC and LE, and they said, "Oh, will you be the popcorn kernel?" I'm like, "You can do it, you can do it." Okay. So I was the popcorn kernel for three years, I think. Let's see. And then they went on to middle school, and my girlfriend was the president of the PTO, and she said, you know, all the people that were on the PTO that year had aged out, their kids were going to high school, so she was new, and she said, "Oh, do this with me, it will be fun." And I'm like, "I don't know, I don't know about this." And, "Oh, you're perfect, because you're, you know, your youngest, his name is Mac, just started fifth grade, so you can do it all four years. You're just what we're looking for." Okay, so I have to say, that was a fun experience. Really wasn't involved with the PTO at Mastway, all my kids went to Mastway. There was so much to do at Mastway, but you were always in there, they wanted you to come in for classes, they wanted you to help with math, they wanted you to go on field trips, they want, you know, it was, I felt like I was at that school every day, just as an involved parent. So the PTO was, it was fun, we did a, we had fun. I was involved in all the major fundraisers, the Holiday Bazaar, the book fair, the Teach a Branch, the janitor launch, whatever. But that, I really enjoyed that, and I got a lot out of it. I got to meet not just my kids' teachers, but now I got to meet most of the teachers at the middle school through all these other activities. I got to, you know, get to know Jay and Bill better. And we were asked to do things like focus groups, when they introduced that competency-based grading, and we did some of that, and I enjoyed, it was a, it was a higher level of involvement, and I enjoyed it. And so last year, it was my fourth year on the PTO, and I'm not, I'm assuming that all the PTOs were asked to join the Go Vote Oyster River Middle School Committee. I don't know, I'm assuming that's how I got invited to maybe to join it.
Yeah, that's true.
So I went, I was the only one of all the PTOs, and that was a really great experience. What I enjoyed most about it was the people that I met. And it was probably, there were probably around 20 of us in the group, and there were retired teachers from Oyster River, there was, I think, a former, some former board members, there were just parents, there were, some of you were on that. It was really, it was an interesting group of people, and I really enjoyed everybody that I met, and the work on it. It was more involved than the PTO. And so when this opportunity came up, actually, there was one of the, one of the moms in the group who wrote and said, I don't know, maybe the middle of August, and said, "Dr. Rotner was resigning, and there was going to be an open position." And she said, "I think all of you would be great candidates to be on the school board, so think about it." She couldn't do it because she's an employee in the district, so she said, "I think you would all be great." And all those people in the group would be. I mean, obviously, some of them couldn't do it, but those that were eligible. There was actually one dad who I'd never met before, but really enjoyed working with him, and I remember, you know, last winter, sitting where he was on the same, what's called, subcommittee that I was, and I remember thinking, "He would be a great school board member someday." His kids are young, but he was, he was kind, he was friendly, he was well-spoken, he had great ideas, and I remember thinking that then. So when this opportunity came up, I thought about it in August, and, you know, I had some people, you know, come to me and say, "You should do it, you'd be great at it." Or other people said, "Why would you do that?" Nobody said, "You should do it, it'd be fun." Full disclosure. But I thought, "Okay, I'm going to, you know, apply and see where it goes." I'm at a point now where my oldest is 25, he's out of the house and on his own, and my daughter is a senior. Full disclosure, she's at St. Thomas, she's been there all four years for high school. She, nothing to do with the academics, she had a hard time in middle school with mean girl drama, and after a couple years of that, we decided to, what she calls a friend group, that she needed a new friend group. And so we sent her there, and it worked. So she's there, and then my youngest has just started as a freshman at the high school. So they're not swimming anymore, they're not doing Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, there's no more popcorn, no more cookies, no more middle school PTO, so I have the time now to do this. The timing of this for me is also, is another reason I applied. I currently have my own business, I'm a travel agent. I retired from Delta almost six years ago, I was a flight attendant, and started my own travel business, I'm a home-based travel agent, but since March, I'm not out of business, but I'm really not in business. Nobody's traveling, I don't have any clients traveling. Nobody's calling and saying, you know, "When this pandemic's over, I want to go on cruises 4,000 people." So I do work at it, but it really is not taking up very much of my time. So I have the time to devote to it right now, so that's another reason.
Great, thank you. I have a question that kind of relates to that. It seems that each board member brings some unique skills, knowledges, and experience that come from their work experience, and I was wondering, like, what do you see yourself bringing from these experiences you've had, particularly with the travel industry, you know, airline, working in the airlines, that would be useful on a school board?
That's a good question. I know people are thinking that. Well, I was a tour guide for seven years, and then I was a flight attendant, and then, and now a travel agent, but almost 30 years as a, you know, between tour guiding and then being a flight attendant, and all of the, all three of those careers, I was a problem solver. Those are problem-solving careers. When I was a tour guide, they hired me when I was 20, I was really young, I was a junior in college, and I worked that summer, I went back to school, finished, and then I went on full-time with them, and that was singing and playing bingo. Basically, it was, took senior citizens on tours, up to 45 senior citizens, usually senior citizens. Started out singing and playing bingo on bus tours all over the East Coast, and then eventually I got to do, they called them ad tours, but Hawaii and Alaska, and Australia, New Zealand, the South Pacific, all that. So I worked my way up and did some really nice tours, but there were a lot of problems that happened along the way. There were people that got sick, there, I had a bus driver die on me, thankfully he wasn't driving, but still, I was 22 years old and didn't show up for breakfast. I had a lot of things to deal with, and, you know, passengers got sick, they fell up the curb, they fell down the curb, they fell in the bus, they lost this, they, you know, I had airlines that canceled, I was, you know, I was in Costa Rica, and American Airlines went on strike, and I was stuck there with 45 people with no way out, and I didn't really speak Spanish. I had hotels that, you know, walked us, and I could go on and on. It was, I was a problem solver, and by the time I went to Delta, I was a really good problem solver, actually, and that career is the same, was it pretty much the same. The nice thing about it is when I got to the hotel, I didn't have 45 senior citizens with me, so it was definitely easier. But, you know, you could work the same flight every day, and every day it would be different, and there were problems every day. Most days, the problems were small, you know, we're late, they're going to miss their connection, there's the worst airline they've ever flown on, their bag won't fit, they don't want to check it, you know, they snuck their ferret on in their purse and it escaped in the middle of the flight. So they're small, that's a small problem, you know, "We just left for Europe, and we have 48 people in business class, and we have no wine opener." That's a problem. It's not life-threatening, but those are problems, those are the small problems, but all the way up to medical emergencies. I mean, we were trained to, you know, use a defibrillator there on all the airplanes, and we had to take it out, we had to use it. I worked towards the end of my career, I was based at JFK, and we did mostly Europe, and we had medical emergencies in, over the middle of the Atlantic, we had serious medical emergencies. People died, you know, people we had to use medical equipment on. And then we had mechanical emergencies. I mean, over the course of 20, 21 years, I probably had five or six emergency landings, where I actually had to prepare the cabin for an emergency landing. And anyways, again, I could go on and on about that, but, and as a travel agent, I'm still a problem solver, you know, and this hit last March 13th. I had people on cruise ships, I had four people in Peru, I had someone else over in Europe, and had to work to get them home really quickly. So I was a problem solver, and I'm a good problem solver. And the other thing is, as a flight attendant, I was part of a crew, and I never had to solve these problems by myself. I worked with my crew, the flight attendants, and if it was a serious problem, we would go to the pilots, and they would become part of the solution. So I'm a really good team player, I'm, you know, you guys work together, and I think that's one of my strengths.
Okay, thank you.
So that's a good segue into this question. So what in your opinion makes a good board member?
Well, I think, I think you have to be a good listener. I think you have to, you know, listen to each other, what each, all of you bring something different to the table, and you all have different backgrounds, different experiences, different children, you know, all our children are different. I think you have to be respectful of each other, because you do have different opinions. I'm sure that you all six don't agree all the time. I think you have to consider all the parties that are involved in some of these decisions you make, you know, the students, but the teachers, the other employee groups, the taxpayers, there's a lot of people to please, and I think you have to, you all need to take, you have to take them all into consideration. I think you have to be committed, I think you have to have the time to do, you know, to commit to being on the board. I think this is a really challenging time for the board, and I think that, you know, you have to have the time to commit to it, and I think you have to be prepared for board meetings beyond time. Like I said, I have a lot of time right now to get up to speed on the issues. I've looked at the schedule from now till March, I don't have any conflicts, so I know I can be at all the meetings. I think you also have to be, you know, not have a personal or hidden agenda, you know, it's not about me and what I wanted to get done if you select me, you know, it's not about me and what I want to do on the board. You know, I don't, I don't really have an agenda, whatever's, you know, whatever's on your agenda from now till March, that will be on my agenda. That's my agenda, because I think that you all have all the normal things you deal with this time of year to deal with, and then you also have COVID-19, and all that's brought on top of it. So I'm not looking to add anything, so.
Great, thank you.
We're about halfway through our time.
This kind of leads into this question again, so I think whoever did the order of these questions is actually perfect, because they're all falling into place. But if you think of an organization or group that you've worked with, which personal traits are the most important for the group's success, and which would also be the most disruptive?
I think the important traits to have is to just, you know, to have respect for everybody in the group, and everybody's opinions. I think you need to listen to everybody's opinions. Traits, is that what you're asking me on?
Yep, personal traits that are most important for the group's success.
I think you have to be approachable, I think you have to be, you know, friendly, I think you have to be, you know, open to new ideas, you can't be, you know, just stuck on what you think is the best decision, or what you think is right. You need to be open to listening to everybody's opinions, and everybody's opinions in their, into consideration.
What do you think is the most, is a more disruptive trait?
I would say maybe coming in with a hidden agenda, or something that you personally want, you know, to get accomplished, or you personally, you know, you have some, I don't know, personal opinion that maybe no one else shares, and you're going to, you know, make every, I don't know. I'm not sure about that.
No, that's fine, that works.
You know what, I've worked with a lot of really nice groups, and so they've all been respectful of each other, and I'm trying to think in that, in that way.
That's fine, I'm good.
You can go ahead.
Okay, so over the years, the board has had to make some decisions about issues that were very controversial in the community, such as, we had football a couple years ago, we had cell phones. I am wondering how you would describe your approach to dealing with such issues?
Let's see which one I want to think about. My approach, I mean, being that I would be joining this board, that you, you know, I mean, some of the issues that are going to be coming forward, you guys have been working on, and, you know, you have more information, even if I jump in and I look at all the information, you still have been working on these issues and discussing them, and so I guess I would, you know, first get all the information I can on the issue. I would, you know, get, you know, feedback, well, you know, yeah, all the information I can, whether it be from your previous board meetings, or if I have to do my own research, do my own research, so that I understand the issue, take into consideration all of the comments that come in from parents or different groups. I know you get a lot of those. I remember the football thing, issue. I think I even wrote a letter about the football issue, but I remember, I was not at those board meetings, I didn't have anybody playing football, but I remember they were, yeah, difficult decisions. So I would, you know, I'm sure you all do, take everybody, look at everybody's comments into consideration, and, you know, work with each one of you to make the best decision for the issue, and for, you know, whatever group it's affecting.
Thank you.
I think that's me. Okay, so, so this is really kind of, I tried to think about the position, this temporary one to March, and so when I thought about it, two of the really significant issues that the board faces over the next five, I guess I should say six months, are the budget, and then, of course, what the models look like for the schools, which is, I should probably flip those, because the models for the schools are probably bigger issue, ironically enough, than the budget. What thoughts do you have about how we might address these?
I think the models for school definitely is the biggest issue right now, and I think that if I remember correctly, in August, that you all said you were going to revisit the models that were chosen in about nine weeks, is that right? So that would be, I don't know if it's the next meeting, or it's going to be in the next meeting after that. I think you, I think you have to kind of not, need to, you know, start at the beginning a little bit again, and look, and look at the data again about what's going on with coronavirus in New Hampshire, because some days I get up, I feel like it's Groundhog Day, nothing has changed in six months, and my kid's still in the dining room, and I'm not going anywhere, and, you know, my business is dead, and other days, I get up and think, "Well, things are changing, and there's more tests, and blah, 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 and there's going to be some rapid," you know, there's so much information. But I think that first you have to reevaluate that information, and where it's at in New Hampshire. You have to look at the models you chose, I guess, and see, you know, how they worked, or what worked with it, what didn't work. I think you have to, you know, take in, and now that they've been going for a month, get some feedback from the parents about how it's been working for them, and what they would like to see, you know, go, take their feelings into consideration, their wants, I guess, what, you know, what they'd like to see going forward. Look at other school districts, and see what they've done. I mean, two heads are better than one sometimes. There may be things that other districts are doing, that are doing that are working really well, and there may be things that they've done that have not been a good idea. And so I think, I think that's the good resource, to look at what others are doing, and if they're doing something really well, we take that into consideration. I don't, I certainly don't have the magic answer on that, there's so much information, I would need to, you know, get up to speed quickly on that, and I'm, I have, like I said, I have the time to do that, and I think that's what you need to do. I think you need to look at the data again and go from there. Is it, is it the same? Is it worse? Are things better, and we could stop bringing in students one day a week, or two days a week, or half a day? Can we expand what you're already doing? Or, you know, should we not do that? So it's definitely a lot to consider. As far as the budget goes, that's a hard question. I don't know if I'm supposed to know more than I know, but I can tell you, from working on the Go Vote Committee that, last year, that I know that the next couple years are difficult budget years, because of the, having the two bonds. So that much I know. What I, I also know that the interest rate for the bond came in lower than was expected, and so there's going to be some savings from that. But what I don't know is, is that already spent? Have things come up related to COVID that you've had to, you know, spend money on? So I, I would have to, you know, get more information. I don't have the magic answer on that either, I'd have to get more information, and, and just look at all, all the information on the budget, and see. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure whether it's even worse than we thought, or...
Not as bad, actually, but we will get, so that, at the end of this month, there's a half-day meeting, which is a budget meeting, and we're, our committee's kind of putting together, you'll get the budget packet, and it'll be like a day where you get to ask questions, and it'll get you up rapidly to speed with what we're spending money on, what our budget goal is, and ultimately, what the tax impact will be.
Which is huge. Not the impact, I don't mean it that way. I just mean that the budget is a, is a, definitely one of the most important things that the school board does, is work that out, set the tax rate, and, you know, I think that's really one of the most important things that you all have to do. So, like I said, I don't, I don't, I feel like if I'm supposed to know more, I don't, that's the only thing I really know, is that the difficult years, the next couple years, because of the middle school bond, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure right now what, what I could say to make it better.
Last question?
Yeah, so you, so you've been involved in a lot of different ways, and seen how the school board operates from the perspective of a parent, as a volunteer, as a taxpayer, a community member. What is one piece of advice that you would give to us, to this school board?
Well, you probably already know that you can't please everybody. You have to, you know, I imagine that it's hard at times, because you do have people that are, some people that are really unhappy with some of the decisions you make, and other people who are okay with those decisions, or happy with the decisions, but I think you really need to remember that you can't please everybody, and you can't take it personally. you can't please everybody and you can't take it personally, I think that you need to, you know, if there's a vote on something, you need to just vote, you know, the way that you feel is best, and if it goes your way, great, if it doesn't go your way, you know, that's okay too, you know, not, you know, not to stew a butter, take it personally, but, you know, not everybody's gonna agree on everything, but I think if you, you know, vote the way you feel is best.
Well, thank you, thank you, for your time and your answers, and so...
Thanks for having me.
Yeah.
It was a little difficult not having to think of things, I could probably come up with better advice than that if I had just a little bit more time to think about it.
We're always listening.
First of all, it's the weirdest thing, first of all, coming here and getting interviewed, everybody's wearing a mask, it's the most...
I know, and I don't usually hold it out like this, but because I'm talking so much, it's, you know, it's coming, it's going in my mouth, it's kind of, so I'm like sitting here like this, so...
It's a strange time, so Deb, thanks so much for being part of this process.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do I wait outside, do you want me to go home, I'm not sure what now, what?
It's up to you, if you'd like to have me call you afterwards, I could do that, if you'd like to wait, I don't know how long the deliberation's gonna take, so after the meeting.
Why don't you call, I mean...
I think I'll, I have your number at home, I'll just give you a call, okay?
That's fine.
Okay, great.
Yep. Thank you.
Should've brought some water. Are you gonna finish your meeting?
No, and it was, it must be a really important meeting, but I had to be here, so...
These lights are pretty brutal.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, they weren't on at first, were they?
No, it's because the screen was blocking them, and then probably because of the...
Should've put on some sunscreen.
Sunglasses.
Could have a mask burn.
If you're an actor, you get those all the time. So we're not to have any performances up here this year.
Hmm.
I come to a lot of them.
Good, of most.
So the Yankees game is done?
In manifesto, okay.
Has the play started yet, or?
Yeah, yeah, the Twins are already eliminated.
Yeah, we have anything meeting like that, like once every three years, so of course it would have been tonight.
Oh, yeah.
It was a good year, knocked up the Red Sox games.
Yeah, I know.
It's like the first time I haven't gone to a baseball game, and I don't, so many years, can't believe it, I'm hoping that we do get a vaccine and I can go next year, I have no idea how they're gonna do the schedule, or how we'll be ready by April to go back to February.
There was actually a lot of new information, I was like...
I wanna go back.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'll find out.
When they get it, I'll get it, yeah, and once you get the vaccine, I'm like, ah.
I thought of, you know, looking at our, like, I don't think that's a good idea.
What's that? Totally. As long as they don't skip on the safety mechanism.
It's crazy, because just when you think you know what the rules are with COVID, they change.
Yeah, we're ready.
Ready.
Just they changes, you know, they all change.
Yeah.
Hey, Uzi, how you doing?
Well, strange that the sound comes from there.
Thank you, Uzi, for being a candidate and coming here this evening, so just to give you an idea of the, kind of, the format, there're gonna be about seven questions, so we have about five minutes per question, so, you know, feel free to expand upon the question, or we might ask a follow-up question, we just need to get through the seven questions. And the first one is maybe a pretty obvious one, but a good one to ask as a beginning, why did you choose to be an applicant for the school board?
We can blame Facebook initially, I was found I was spending a lot of time and energy trying to figure out what was going on, and trying to figure out what I and my neighbors and community members thought about the opening this year, and I finally, one day, thought, well, if I'm spending all this time and energy, why not have a seat at the table? But beyond that initial impetus, I started thinking about what I could contribute at this unique time, and, you know, both the immediate and urgent concerns that the school board is facing, that the district needs to work through, and I know we'll get to those, as well as some of the long-term strategic thinking and work to keep our district really strong, excited me, I think, you know, especially in the latter category, we have an amazing district, and there's so much strength throughout, the teachers, the parents, the community, the administrators, the school board, and, you know, there's always going to be challenges, especially as the world changes and what is expected of graduates evolves, and, you know, so there's a really exciting opportunity to keep our district really thriving, and over the long term, I, you know, I would like to help us get us through the next six months, the next few, the pandemic challenges, the construction of the new middle school, and beyond that, just to keep our district strong. I think just personally as well, in the small times that I've had a chance to work with the school board, whether it's the World Language Program, or even just in public comments for late start, or no cell phones, or some of the other deliberations that you face that I've been a part of, the board seems, you know, generally respectful of each other and diverse viewpoints, thoughtful, trying to understand, you know, marginalized voices or those that might not be heard, and in a time where there's a lot of swirl in the world, it seems a way to act locally and, you know, to be a part of something constructive.
Board members, we all come from different, kind of, we've had different jobs, different experiences that we bring to the board, which brings certain skills, a variety of skills, so I'm wondering, like, if you look at your own work experience, what unique skills, knowledge, and experience do you see yourself bringing to the board?
I guess I feel compelled to say that, you know, first I would come to the board as a resident and as a mom, my two kids, 10 and 12, should be watching now, they're fabulous, you know, my son being in fifth grade and experiencing remote learning, as well as this hybrid model of going in once a week, you know, personal experience navigating the special education process at the PEP school, elementary, middle school, perhaps we'll get to this, but I do think that the, you know, the personal perspective that any one of you or a member brings is really important. Professionally, I guess I would start with my many years working in education, and I mentioned Citizen Schools, but if you'll allow me just to explain a little bit what Citizen Schools is, it's a national nonprofit, and I served as a program manager for a number of years, the goal was really to close the achievement gap, and so Citizen Schools would partner with schools in low-income communities, bring in volunteers to teach hands-on apprenticeships over a number of weeks, and instead of the students being seen as these sort of passive receptacles of knowledge, the model was flipped so that the students were really seen as creators and as leaders, so, for example, if volunteers came from fidelity investments, they might identify together a problem in college savings, and so the students would become experts on college savings, and they would present to their community about 529 college savings plans, or even, you know, the idea that everyone has a place in education, mortician said, you know, I want to teach, what can I teach, and the, you know, collectively they identified that children, that when there's a death, there is guidance around how adults grieve, but less guidance to help kids grieve, so again, the mortician volunteer worked with our staff to develop an apprenticeship and to develop a kid's guide to grieving that was distributed at funeral homes around the city. So I share this because it is a view on education, where kids are leaders, are creators, are generative parts of their communities, and where other resources, you know, you might see that this after-school time is, you know, is a gap, is a deficit, you might see, say that the people who are in finance, or, you know, in their day jobs are too busy to work, and this model was able to kind of shift the view of deficits and weaknesses into a structure that benefited the communities, benefited the kids. So I think, you know, the skills, that experience was pivotal in my life, and the phrase, can we help kids not only beat the odds, the kids that we were working with, but to actually change the odds for all kids, that was something that inspired me and stuck with me. So, you know, beyond Citizen Schools, I've worked in a number of social justice-related areas in a number of, with a number of functions, strategic planning, everything from strategic planning to actually on-the-ground operations, and I think that the, you know, that social justice lens is also something that I bring to the table, but overall, the skills of deeply understanding a social need, and that involves talking with people, that involves trying to, you know, understand diverse perspectives, to come up with themes, to see how systems interact, and unanticipated consequences that might come out of particular actions, you know, for the good of all marginalized groups, you know, and equity across communities, is something that, you know, that I have experience and the skills I would bring to the board.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next question is, what in your opinion makes a good board member?
You guys, no. You know, I think there's, first of all, a good board, there's no single one good board member that you replicate, right, a good board has a diversity of experiences, a diversity of skills and perspectives that they bring, so it's really, you know, I don't envy you at this point, you're trying to figure out the best new member of your board for a certain period of time, I think there, so I think there's some things that all board members need to share, obviously, our respect for each other, and if not collaboration, at least a sense of building towards a shared goal, which in our case is our children's success defined, you know, across college and career readiness, and social, emotional, and global citizenship, our teachers, our community members more broadly, including fiscal responsibility, so I think having a sense of shared purpose, and then having diversity but respect in how those goals are achieved makes for a good board member. And I guess just to your question, I know that representation is important, and has been brought up by this board in the past, at the last meeting, the idea that perhaps having another woman on the board was something very important to, you know, to everyone around the table, it seemed, the idea of Lee representation, and making sure that in addition to gender, there was zip code representation, and so as you're looking at gaps in the board as a whole, you know, not a single member, but in the board as a whole, I guess I would also ask you to consider racial representation, and I was surprised in going through the numbers to learn that the number of people of color in our district is actually larger than the population of Madbury, and you'd never know that, really, because of the history of this area, the representation, you know, on the board so far, and, you know, as someone who's bi-racial, my father's Chinese, it is a unique time for race relations in America, right, and in our community as well, just speaking very personally, because no group is a monolith, my father immigrated from China, he, his bank accounts were frozen because of the conflict between the United States and the Chinese government back in the 40s and 50s, and so the, in our community, Lee actually has the highest percentage of people of Asian descent, one in every 15, you know, one in every 15 kids in the classroom is, you know, is of Asian descent, and so when you hear things like Chinese flu, or you talk about the immigration and exclusion of people from particular countries for whatever reason, it hearkens back to, you know, the first time that the United States excluded people of a particular nationality, the Chinese Exclusion Act, or it hearkens back to Japanese internment, where, again, the government and nationality and individuals and citizenship got all tangled up, so that, I'm just speaking personally there, but I think recognizing that there is a strain that goes beyond the strain that we all feel during this time for a particular part of our community is something that the board may want to consider, when you're talking about, you know, not just what makes a good board member, but what makes a healthy board.
Uzi, if you think of an organization or group that you've worked with, which personal traits are most important for the group's success?
Well, again, I think it depends very much on the role of that person, do you have a particular role in mind?
Nope, just, I'm just looking for what personal traits would be most important so the group as a whole can succeed.
There's, you know, there's certainly a list that a person could go through, what makes a servant leader, you know, someone who can move forward to get things done, but without a sort of a top-down approach, someone who's able to make change happen without the authority necessarily, and the only way you do that, right, is to be able to work with others and to understand their needs and perspectives and, you know, and bring them along, maybe it's not even in a direction that you thought you were going at first, but working with a group in that way, with humility and transparency there. Again, I'm trying to get hard because I think different, there's strength and diversity, and so different roles have, you know, have different ways of slotting in and where the whole is greater than the sum of the parts, and so in most ways, there's a place for every kind of strength, I think I mentioned before that, you know, where some people might see a deficit or a weakness, I tend to think of it, like, maybe it's just a resource in the wrong place, and so I think there's ways that lots of different strengths can slot in, at the same time, I think, you know, certain core values like integrity and transparency, strong communication, all are important traits.
What traits do you think would be most disruptive to a group's success? What traits do you think would be most disruptive to a group's success?
Lack of integrity. You know, in this particular case, you're probably trying to think of how they're related. And I think that, I think it's important to understand the role of the board. And that's not something that I have full mastery of yet. But recognizing, you know, that as a board member, you're representative of, representing a community. And so trying to balance individual desires or even the sense that I know the solution with what others have communicated. So always staying sort of humble and open to what the community wants. And yet, at the same time, you know, being represented or being elected or being chosen, there's a sense of, you know, you're in here for a reason. And so being able to rely on your own, at the end of the day, your own decision-making. I think the relationship between the board and the superintendent is very interesting and unique. In my work on a nonprofit board, which is different than a school board, but has some similarities in that the executive director is the, you know, is the prime, is the sole employee. I think there's, it's very important to recognize, respect, and develop the expertise and sort of autonomy of the person that you've hired to do the job. At the same time, it's the balance of, you know, asking guiding questions, setting policy and procedures, and being the stewards of the long-term vision of the district. So in this particular case, I think it would be detrimental to try to get too much in the weeds. And it's also detrimental to totally, you know, absolve all responsibility to know what's going on. And so walking that, in that middle ground, is important.
We're about halfway through our time.
We're doing fine.
So over the years, the board has had to make decisions on issues that have been controversial, where there were really strong opinions in both the community and on the board. You mentioned one of them with cell phones. Another example would be football. And my question is, how would you describe your approach to dealing with such issues?
I think this gets to Brian's question in a number of ways. And also Dan's, you know, what is, what makes for a strong board member who is able to listen to a variety of opinions, seek data as well as stories, and to recognize one's own personal biases or leanings or blind spots, and, you know, actively look for the other. You know, we all gravitate towards one or the other. And then, at the end of the day, you know, be confident in one's own ability to make a decision as a representative of the community. I don't think it's easy, especially when friends and people close to you personally feel strongly one way or the other. And I also acknowledge that I think the board is in a much, and community is in a much better place than it was 10 years ago, when I swore I would never join the school board. But where there was, you know, some real vitriol. And I think, you know, you're going to ask, what are the most pressing issues for the board in the next six months? I think one of those responsibilities is to model what thoughtful decision-making by elected representatives looks like.
Is that me? Okay, so I'll bring up the issues because you segued right into that. So when we look at, I said the next five months, but really, we'll call it the next six months. The two things that really stuck out at the top of my head, and I'll reverse them. The first is clearly the school attendance models. That's a big issue. We'll face it in October, and then we'll face it again in January likely, as we try to evaluate it. And then the second one is the budget, of course, which is always a big process. So what thoughts do you have about how we might address these?
Great question. And I think for COVID, the questions are absolutely when and how we return to school, you know, the attendance piece of it. And I think more broadly, how we ensure that all students are getting as good an education as they can under their circumstances, right? We're going to, so I'll get to that. For the first question about attendance and these checkpoints that the board has set up, I think there, we need to look at the data and the anecdotes, the data being the infection rates and the cases of where students have been asked, you know, how disruptive it is to have the screening system that we have. Is it getting in the way of school learning satisfaction? The other outreach and sort of gathering of our performance so far. I do think that having a student who's experiencing the hybrid model is really important. If I might talk about, you know, the personal perspective that I would bring to this. My fifth grader is in the hybrid model. He studies from home Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, goes to school half-day for Wednesdays. And on his fourth day of in-school learning, he was flagged for COVID-like symptoms. So every parent dreads to get that call. I was pretty sure it was seasonal allergies. And at the same time, I was really grateful that the nurse was following the correct procedure and, you know, that we're going to get more false positives, hopefully, than false negatives and prevent the spread in the school. But just going through that process was, you know, it's something that is going to happen more and more. And I, you know, I wish board members, there were an elementary parent because the hybrid model is much more intense. But one of the questions is going to be middle school, right? Middle school next as going to in-person. Another tension that I'm living and that a family is living is with students that, on one hand, I have one son that does very well in remote learning, and another who is, you know, smart and kind and funny and a great friend and really needs supervision around being on a computer at all and particularly online instruction. And so I feel, very personally, the need to have him in school. And so I think that personally, I would bring an understanding of the nuances and forces on both sides, and that that's really healthy in a group like this. And to your question at the board level, I think that, you know, one of the things we need to recognize is that change is not going away. And so the thoughtfulness, I think it's been seen so far, but recognizing that the plans will change and be adaptive, that there may be times where we open, there may be times that we close. It's almost like a ship, right, with its bulkheads of you want to keep the water from swamping the entire boat, so you build your structures appropriately. You have thresholds for certain decisions. And then you communicate those really well. I think it's related to the second question, actually, of how we ensure that all kids are getting as good a education as they can under their circumstances. And part of this is social justice-related and making sure that our students that might not have access to Wi-Fi or to food or to working space conducive to participating on online instruction are being supported. Part of it, too, is, parents understand that the teachers and administrators are working incredibly hard and are not expecting that we are going to get, you know, that our children will emerge from this crazy year at the same level if they were every day in school. And there's some expectation that the reduced competencies, whatever they are, that there's, that these have been, these have been thought about, these have been communicated across the teachers. So, you know, a seventh grader will be, will emerge with, we're aiming for these competencies. It's not what it would be in a normal year, but it's what we can aim for. And similarly, that there's standards across how the teachers interact with kids. There is a, you know, a friend who's pointing out that different teachers appear in the elementary level to be engaging at different levels of one-on-one communication with the kids. You know, do we, as a district, and this might not, this is not a board-level decision, it's an administration decision, but the board can support it. Do we, as a district, believe that this particular strategy of one-on-one Zoom is worth the time? And if so, what are our expectations across all teachers that we, you know, that we are going to do this? So I think this question of, we can't do everything. What are we committing to as a district for this year? And how are we supporting our teachers and communicating with parents and community so that, you know, so that there are as few surprises and disappointments as possible will be really important? So I guess all this to say, it's a long way of saying that the open or closed school, like attendance and whether it's in-person or remote, is definitely important. And it's part of a sort of a larger conundrum of in these next six months, in this next year, how we make sure that our kids are getting everything they can and it's being communicated well to parents and community.
So you've been involved in a lot of different ways in the schools and the community, as a parent, as a volunteer, as a taxpayer. And so you've seen how the school district and the school board specifically has operated. So the question is, what is one piece of advice that you would give to us, to the school board?
To ask that question, to ask the question of, we can't state standards, our expectations for teacher engagement and what instruction looks like have been set at a mark for normal times. These are not normal times. So how are we intentionally and thoughtfully lowering the standards, but then making sure that we hit those standards? And I think this actually connects to a lot of the questions that you've asked, including the relationship between the board and the superintendent. And as a board and as individuals, asking at the right level, not overstepping bounds into operations or, you know, clamping down on what I think is, has been a strong rollout this year. And yet, we can, you know, this is the board's responsibility to answer those very questions.
UC, thanks so much. Thank you for being part of this process. Thank you for answering our questions, so.
Thank you. I realized that I didn't answer Al's part B, which was about the budget. Yes, the budget. You know, simply to say, I've had experience developing budgets, managing to budgets, selling budgets, communicating to, you know, not a whole community of voters, but to certainly not quite friendly sometimes stakeholders. And in this particular year, I do have some experience in solar finance, particularly power purchase agreements. That's a small part of what the board is considering, but something I could bring.
Thank you.
Thank you, UC.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you all.
So I'll give you a call. I'll call when the meeting's over, okay?
Okay.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, we have a chance to talk about our impressions. Any ideas we have about how we're going to proceed in voting? And then we'll have a vote. So we want to get started?
Wow, people are just jumping right in.
I'll go. So, you know, not to sort of beat a dead horse, I think, you know, I feel the same way I did the other night. We have two excellent candidates. I could frankly envision a time in the relatively near future where they both serve on the board. And, you know, so I think we're in an absolute position of strength here. For me, I think the issues we talked about are still relevant, right? You know, what town you live in, the experience, perspective, who you are, what you bring to the board is all still very relevant. I've been thinking more about the timing of this decision. And sort of, it's a very unfortunate time for a new person to step into this role. You know, all of us have had the luxury of coming in in a normal time in the spring.
Not me.
No, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, Brian. I apologize, all right, all right. Take that back. I feel that UC is best positioned to hit the ground running and feel comfortable being a part of the difficult discussions and decisions that are in the more immediate future. I feel she's best positioned to be successful in that short term that we are deciding on tonight. And so, and the other thing is to, I remind myself, is that this decision is a very short, impacts a very short period of time that ultimately, in March of next year, the voters will decide sort of the longer-term solution to the vacancy. So, you know, I have other thoughts, but, you know, I'll sort of yield to others to share what they think.
I can go if you want to. So I have, this is the second time I've made this decision, actually, ironically enough. I had to do this for the town council. So I've had a chance to think about it, and I've had a chance to think about how to solve exactly what you're talking about, a short-term position and a longer-term view. And so I look at this of the candidates, and I think the biggest issue going forward right now, clearly, is the model of the school and change in the dynamic of the model of the school. I think the budget and all that, you know, there will be enough structure that somebody new can come in, that we can work them through and lay groundwork that is not super steep curve. And so when I look at the two candidates, and I agree, I think both of them, and my thought process, because I really see this as like replacing not only Kenny, but also me in the long term. So I would like, I like both of them as candidates. I think both of them sitting on the board would really help address a lot of the structural issues, I think, that are here in terms of representation and also better representation for Lee. So when I look at like the short-term position, I actually like, I think Deb is better positioned right now to deal with the school opening model just because she has so much experience with kids going through the school right now. And she has experience at all three levels. And so as we try to tackle through, I know UC is coming into the middle school now, but Deb has been in the middle school for four years and also gone through the high school. So the high school and the middle school tend to be the most difficult areas we have right now. I know I advocated the hardest for like pushing kids in the elementary level, but our middle school and high school kids, our vast majority of middle school and high school kids are fully remote right now. The kids that aren't doing activities, sports, are very isolated. So I like, I think Deb brings a better perspective, overall perspective, excuse me, to help us deal with that. I think when I look at UC, UC is a phenomenal candidate. We talk about strategic planning and all that, and she'll be great dealing with those issues. But I don't think the six-month position is the right position for her. I think she would be better served, I think our communities would be better served, for her to put her name on the ballot and run as the Durham position, a three-year term. That would give her, when you begin to talk about how do you come out of COVID, and you talk about curriculum and all that, that's not, we're not going to do that in six months. We're not going to be doing that to March. We're going to be adapting the model, and we're going to be trying to get. We're going to be adapting the model, and we're going to be trying to get the budget done. And so I think having her do that and having Deb take on what I think is our most difficult touching, pressing issue, is the best fit for each of them as candidates. And this is exactly how we approached it at the town council. We had two people, one who we wanted the steady, experienced force as we go through these difficult decisions in the next six months. And the second was a candidate that we thought would be a better long-term fit. So that's my two cents of how I see it. Of course, it all depends on the voters, but.
Can I just ask a quick process question? Would tonight's decision in any way preclude UC from deciding to run for that position that you described, the Durham rep?
It doesn't. But ideally, when you look at that, she would be filling temporarily an at-large seat.
Right.
It just, it structurally makes much more sense to me to have somebody take the at-large seat, which would be a Lee representative, and would solve the Lee representation problem. And then UC would take the Durham slot, which is a better, she's a great representative of Durham, which would be the perfect fit, and a longer time window, by the way, of three years, rather than taking a six-month thing and then putting your name on a ballot.
For another, you get another year, because you have to run again.
And run again a year, yeah. So it's again, so it'd be, she'd actually, in order to do a longer thing, she would have to go through three elections.
I guess what I'm saying is she could, if she were chosen, she could then file to run for the open Durham seat in March, as opposed to running to fill the remainder of the term.
She could.
Right, so I'm just teasing out the scenario.
I tend to think in terms of simplicity, not in complexities. So it's like, the most simple solution is to try to fill positions that fit best what people's strengths are.
I think it's important to correct the record on one thing you said. So the Terralls are actually in their third year of having middle school children. So she mentioned her fifth grader specifically, but they have a seventh grader as well.
Okay, yeah, I mean, whatever. But that doesn't preclude the other thing, that she hasn't had a high schooler, right?
I agree, but you made a statement, and I just want to make sure that the statement, that the record was correct.
Okay, so, well, I'd already assumed she had a middle schooler, but I wouldn't argue with that.
Okay. I thought both of the candidates did really well tonight. I thought they both showed the kind of strengths, humor, clarity. I thought that they both were just outstanding in terms of their self-presentation tonight. And so I wanted to say that. And I voted for Deb last time, but I'm going to vote for Yuzi tonight. I felt, and this goes to your short-term issue, just in listening to her, it felt like she was just totally up to speed on the issues that we would need to be addressing coming forward, that she would be right, ready to start on October 7. I thought the clarity, the complexity of her answers, her knowledge of how boards work. I thought she was just absolutely, you know, this brilliant analytic mind and this experience that she could bring. And I do hope that, however it sorts out, I could easily imagine in March, you could have both these people on the board, depending on how they decide. So it's tough, because I think Deb would be an outstanding member. And when I made my first list, I had three names. And one of them was Yuzi, and one of them was Deb. So I mean, it's really people that I thought were really great. And I think that everything that I thought would make them great in terms of their self-presentation really came through. Still, I think that for the short term, I think Yuzi is so current in terms of what we're going to have to deal with, that I think she would just hit the ground running.
Well, like we said, both are great candidates. But as Al said, it's right seat, wrong time, I think, for Yuzi. And the reason being is, I look at, who do I want to work with for the next six months? Who's going to be drinking water through a fire hose? Probably rather be Deb. And the reason being, you know, none of us had school board experience before we came here. So, you know, her coming on, I mean, everyone's worked in some level of organization that they can bring to the table. But like my issue, my two issues, one of them, as I'll reiterate, is Lee representation. And no one here has really shown me why Lee does not deserve more representation on this board. No one has brought that up, except for me and Al. And I think, Tom, you may have mentioned it last time we met. But why does Lee not deserve that representation? Madbury has two, Durham has four, or had four. And we're trying to, I'd love to be able to even this out a little bit and have a little more fair representation. We're all about fairness. And also, you know, although Yuzi was great in her answers, she kind of went circular on a lot of her answers and didn't answer some of them. So I was, why wouldn't she get right to the point and answer the question? She didn't even answer my question that I asked. So that was concerning. So I think Deb would have more of an open mind coming into this. I think the free, I think she has more free time on her hands than Yuzi does. And she'd be able to, whether you're, however you go about, I know Al taught me when I first started, you want to learn about what the school board does, go watch the old meetings. You know, and that's what I did. I binge-watched a ton of meetings, most boring time of my life, but, you know. But, you know, it worked, so, yeah. But, you know, I just, I look at it as, who do I think would fit in and do the job for at least the next six months? And I think Yuzi would be great on the board. I just don't think, I think she would be better off, like Al said, with the Durham spot, representing Durham. I strongly feel that Lee deserves more representation. No one here has actually told me why Lee doesn't deserve more representation. You know, so I'm curious as to what everyone thinks on that.
Well, I think she also said the different kinds of representation. And there's, she talked about racial diversity, which has certainly not been something we've had at all now. I mean, so there's, I mean, I take your point, but I think that there's a lot of different kinds of diversity. And I think, in my mind, it's still an at-large seat, so that every, you know, it's not a Lee seat, it's an at-large seat. And so that everybody from the communities, you know, have a.
Right, they can. But if we do the right, make the right decision on fairness and then trying to get equal representation, that's really what it comes down to.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to be disappointed either way.
Okay.
But I'm just disappointed that no one really takes more weight onto that argument, so.
Anybody else?
Were you going to say something?
Well, either way, I'm, well, so I think that, I guess, on the subject of Lee representation, you know, if I followed that logic, then I shouldn't be here, right? And this is a cooperative district, and I think we really need to strive to look at ourselves as a cooperative district and not a Lee and Madbury and Durham district. So I, if there are places where Lee feels underrepresented in the way that the school district works, those are issues that we do need to address. I haven't heard of what those are, but I think that is something that perhaps is worth addressing at a future time. When I think about what the work of this board is, and I think about our mission to, of working together to engage every learner, that is, I still think that's an incredibly audacious goal. And when I look at what Yuzi has done with other board service, with work for full inclusion of all children, a demonstrated commitment and experience in that area, I think that would be a huge asset to the board, and that's where I think we should be. I think that she would help us move forward in a constructive way.
Denise?
Okay, so now that I've heard everybody. So interestingly, because after Al said what he said, I was thinking, because of course I supported Yuzi at the last, at the last meeting. And after hearing what Al said, I'm in my mind, I'm saying, oh, okay, so that makes sense. So I'll go with Deb, and that'll tilt it towards the, you know, because we're 3-3 split, right? So I'll go with this. But now I'm hearing, Tom sounds like he's switched over to Yuzi, so I switch over to Deb. We're 3-3 again. So here's my deal. And I think both candidates are excellent, and I truly do hope that whoever isn't the person that gets it now does run in March. I do hear what you're saying is that it's simpler to do it, okay, we do, you know, Deb now, and then Yuzi runs for the, at the Durham, the Durham position in March. But it sounds like what I'm hearing is there's a little more support for Yuzi at this time. And she certainly, you know, she was my, she was my original choice for many of the reasons that she spoke of tonight. And again, I thought Deb did a wonderful job tonight. I can certainly envision her on this board. And so hopefully, things will fall into place, but I will be casting my vote for Yuzi.
Ready to vote?
Yes, no, let's get it done.
Show of hands, vote for Deb. Two for Yuzi. So Yuzi is our choice. Thank you for the deliberations. And thanks to all the candidates who put their names in. It was a real new generation of people coming forward. It's very encouraging. So the only thing, other thing we have to do is to go into a non-meeting. So I think we adjourn, go into a non-meeting, is that the way it works?
Yeah.
And then come out, and then adjourn the board meeting, so.
No, no, I think with this non-meeting, we just adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
It's not like a non-public.
We just adjourn the meeting, have the non-meeting. And Michael, do we need to keep notes on the non-meeting? Is that the?
No, because it's a non-meeting.
Our policy for minutes actually requires that we maintain a summary minute, a summary kind of minutes. It's a record of the meeting that just describes who was there, when it started and ended, and what the, I forget what the language is, but why it's okay for it to be non-meeting, so.
The only thing I would add is, we should probably say that we're going into the non-meeting for strategy or negotiation with respect to collective bargaining.
Yeah, okay.
Do you need a motion to adjourn first?
I moved to adjourn.
Moved by Michael, second by Brian. All those in favor? Okay, we're adjourned and going into non-meeting.